Namaste Jay Hind and welcome to this edition of the Right Stand, I am Anand Arsiman. Ladies and gentlemen, it was all about the old Parliament today and it will be about the entire Parliament moving to the new building on Ganesh Chaturte come Tuesday. But the big story ladies and gentlemen was Prime Minister Narendra Modi leading the discussion on seventy-five years in this Parliament where he started by saying that it was built by the colonizers but the effort, the shram and the blood and sweat was of the people of Bharat and of course the money was also that of Bharat and the policies, the structure, framework has been perhaps the most vibrant democracy on this planet that is Bharat over the last seven and a half decades. The ups and downs, the good and the bad, the walls of that Parliament have seen a lot. Work will continue although parliamentarians will move to the new Parliament, we are given to understand bulk of the areas of the Lok Sabha and some portions and the Rajasabha perhaps will be converted into a museum but the offices will continue to function. So there will be of course the backbone of India's path going forward in terms of policy, parliamentarians etcetera, work in Parliament, there will be the impact of the old building but it will all move, there will be a shift and that's where the twist in the story is. What happens on Wednesday? Is this going to be a landmark bill that sets the tone that the comeback of PM Narendra Modi in 2024 will ride on women and that is also because of the Women's Reservation Bill and will that perhaps drive the wedge in this India alliance? That's the big question and of course the lead debate tonight on the Right Stand.
Praram se ab tak karib karib saade saath hazaar se adhi janupratinidhi dono sadhoro main mela karke nogaam de chuke itne saalo. Is kaal khann main karib 600 mahila samshad hone bhi is sadhan ki ghariba ko bhaya hai dono sadhoro.
Fifty percent of India's population is women. So why don't we all deliberate in the new building and maybe the first decision that the Honorable Prime Minister can take is ask and we all support him if he brings in the reservation for women.
Well ladies and gentlemen, India may be on the cusp of making history as the Women's Reservation Bill is likely to be tabled in this special parliamentary session. This also intensifies the long shot demand of increasing representation of women in our democracy. Well, the bill, the will has been introduced multiple times, faced lapses in 1996, 98, 99 and 2008 Rajasabha passage that stalled in the Lok Sabha. This bill can bridge the gender gap in politics, empowering women to actively participate in decision-making and bringing diverse perspectives on crucial matters such as gender equality, healthcare, education and so much more. The Women's Reservation Bill is not just about women's rights, it's about strengthening democracy and giving fifty-one percent of our population an equal representation in Parliament, fostering inclusive governance. It's also the need of the hour to create perhaps a more equitable India. But let's try and break this down for you. First up, what would this bill mean if it were to be passed in Parliament? As of now, if you look at the numbers, thirty-three percent of the seats are reserved for women in the Lok Sabha, thirty-three percent seats are reserved for women in state assemblies and thirty-three percent seats are reserved for SC, STs that shall be for women. Then, reserved seats may be allotted by rotation to different constituencies. Reservation shall cease to exist fifteen years post the commencement of this act. Now, let me also tell you the current representation of women in Parliament and if you take a look at these numbers, it's not something that we should actually be proud of despite the Prime Minister saying that nearly six hundred women MPs have been, have represented or have been there in Parliament. The Lok Sabha strength, current strength is five thirty-nine, women MPs is eighty-two percent, the representation this time perhaps one of the highest ever is fifteen percent. In the Rajasabha, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, thirty-two women MPs and the total representation percentage is thirteen percent. Now, this is like I said, in the, in the recent past, this is one of the highest numbers with only fifteen percent representation of women in the Lok Sabha, thirteen percent in the Rajasabha, very clearly, women voices significantly underrepresented in our legislative bodies. Now let's try and examine the arguments on both sides. What are the arguments that stand out? The supporters are arguing that it promotes gender equality in politics, those who are against say better qualified men may lose an opportunity, breaks down the stereotypes about women in leadership role, gender not the same as a caste grouping, it aligns India with world norms and standards, the fear of surge in proxy candidates, already there is talk of a sarpanchpati, now you'll have a vidhayakpati and a sansatpati, that's what's going to happen, proxy candidates, that's a problem. So these are the issues that stand out if you look at what are, what are the, what are the voices? Now those who are opposing it, what do they say? Those who have opposed the bill, they have, those who are opposing the bill right now are also part of this India alliance and that's why many believe that this could actually drive a wedge among these parties. These parties have vociferously opposed this even during the times of the Congress because they have always demanded a quota within the quota, that means you have reservation for women and in that also you mark a separate quota for OBCs etcetera. The Samajwadi Party, one of them, Rashniya Jantadal, the other one, the Jantadal United, Baujan Samaj Party and the Jaarkan Muktimurcha, all these parties have worked on castes, subcastes and those divisions and fault lines within society and have continued to feed their own political appetite with this over the last many, many years. Let's go across to and understand what our parliamentarians actually feel. L. Anuman Tayya Rajasabha MP is with us, Dr. Amar Patnaik Rajasabha MP of the BJP with us, BJD with us, Sunal Man Singh, Padma Vibhushan and Padma Bhushan awadi Rajasabha MP also with us and we also have Nalin Kohli, National spokesperson of the BJP. Namaste and Jay Hind to all our panelists, thank you very, very much for joining us. L. Anuman Tayya ji, I'm going to start with you, this is what the Congress had proposed.
Yes.
We are given to understand that there could be a few more modifications or improvements to this bill but the Congress has come out openly and said, we would like this bill that was passed in the Rajasabha to be once again pushed. So will the Congress back it if it is in that shape as the Congress envisaged?
Look, Congress party has already passed the bill but the bill did not get passed in the Lok Sabha for the reason the internal reservation from among the OBC groups has to be given, so that was the stand taken by many allies of the UPA then. And according to me, the Congress party will not to say or not hesitate to support the internal quota of the women in the bill which is proposed now. The reasons are this, see, it is a representation of all the sections of the society who has to get their share. Wherever the OBC reservations are there, you know, the reservation grouping has been done and the representation has been given to them according to their population or according to the backwardness of the groups. The same strategy applies in this also, all the women, the women need not be a, only the city oriented woman should get or the allied woman should get or woman who are supposed to be called as educated should get, every woman should get the representation. So that way, the internal reservation and the modifications to the bill, if can be done, it should be agreed by the Congress and the Congress party will agree and say, yes, we are for the women, we are for the bill but if the modifications are suggested, they are agreeable to that.
Yeah, but what happened is that, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the Congress party officially say that they would like the bill to be brought in at the same way that the Congress had passed it in the upper house? They never asked for any of these modifications and if that is the case, the Congress never moved those modifications during its time too?
No, it was, it was, please, please, it was that time, the Congress passed the bill thinking that all other parties will accept it. But when the parties raised their genuine concerns to the bill, the Congress party is very clear, open and very honestly wanted to implement the Women's Reservation Bill, so they will agree for the modification also, there is nothing wrong in that.
Okay, I, I will come back.
And it doesn't mean that, we have not drawn, done, so we will not agree now.
Okay, let me bring in Nalin Kohli, yes, Nalin ji.
Anand, we need to start with the basics or the fundamentals. This is something that's under discussion as and when, in what form it comes, that only those who are in Parliament as per parliamentary procedure, they will know. Basically, how does the constitution envisage an act coming in or something, it is through Parliament, in Parliament it's a defined process, in that process, all amendments, whether they have to be added, any changes, that's part of the parliamentary procedure. So as far as I see it, this argument that is coming from the respected Member of Parliament and senior leader is basically in the air, it is not based on any factual position at the moment or on a fact that it is not like this or it is like this, that is unknown, so it's speculative. I think what we can do today is basically subscribe to the principle, should there be women's reservation? Should it be there to impact to see that we have more women coming out in what you call public life, more in participative democracy and representative democracy? Obviously, that's a good goal to have, it's a cherished goal, it is something that has been discussed for decades. Now whether is it to be that is part of Parliament, how it is to be that is part of Parliament? So today, all we can do is confine ourselves that should there be something like that? Certainly, that's a positive discussion.
There are some more things we can do, Nalin ji.
There cannot be any.
I request, I, I respect your point of view but there is something more we can do. We can understand what is the BJP's position, does the BJP agree with the quota within quota? Has the BJP changed its stance from what it was in the past? Because if my memory serves me right, the BJP also opposed the bill that was brought in by the Congress, the Women's Reservation Bill?
So, it's a good question to ask but again, that is something and I say it with a sense of responsibility, I am a spokesperson of the party, I am not in the parliamentary party and that is something that logically has to be asked to someone in the parliamentary party if the bill has been circulated or discussed there. So therefore again, as I go back to what I said, Anand, then I don't mean it as any disrespect, it's speculative because ultimately something, let me go to another example.
No, but I'm asking you, has the party's position changed sir? I'm not saying, I'm not even, I'm not even.
I'm answering that.
Okay.
I'm answering that.
Yeah.
I'm answering that, Anand.
Jee.
In a different way, than national, as an example, a real example, the nationalization of banks took place in the seventies with the idea that poor people must have bank accounts or access to financial institutions. It never happened from the nineteen-seventies. Now Pradhankmantri Janthana Yojana came, it didn't require a bill, it came under a scheme.
No, 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 no.
Now somebody would say that you supported it then or didn't support it, it's a change of stance. So, so one minute, Anuman Tayya ji, please bear with me, I'm giving an example, what is the stand at a particular point of time of any political party including mine or yours or anyone else will be on the facts of that particular time and what was proposed and what were the circumstances? Can you say what was proposed in the nineteen-eighties is something that you must stick to even today in two thousand and twenty-three if the circumstances have changed and they have already been considered in the bill?
Now, Amar Patnaik ji, where do you stand sir? Because one of the arguments, as I say, namaste and good evening, always a pleasure to speak with you, like Sunal Man Singh ji, thank you for your patience, Sunal ji, your thoughts after Amar Patnaik ji? Now, one of the arguments Amar Patnaik ji is if there is a thirty-three percent reservation across the board, all reserve seats will come under it automatically, those seats that are reserved you will have to find based on that reserve category, women candidates will have to consider, fight there. So why should there be a quota within quota, is that argument itself fallacious?
Anand, you see, I think let's not quarrel and squabble about the mitigities of the bill, I think the most important thing to achieve by way of a goal is to, you know, achieve thirty-three percent reservation for women in the Parliament and in the assemblies. I think this is a goal that has been, that we haven't been able to achieve in the last twenty-five years and you know that my party are leader of it, but I, we have been talking about it for the last twenty years and we were the ones who have already done fifty percent in our local cell bodies and there the architecture of reservation would be probably different from the architecture that we are going to have once the bill gets introduced. So getting into the mitigities of whether it would, you know, create proxies or whether it would create a situation where, you know, some, some of the OBCs will get neglected, I think these are same arguments which have been advanced earlier while not supporting the bill and creating a confusion. So I think first of all, all the parties together and we have been saying it even in our Parliament, you know, in all party meetings, every session, every session literally that our leader wants that in conformity with the fact that fifty-one percent of the population are women and it is a non-negotiable, you know, our leader believes that it is a non-negotiable method of governance that these people do not find place in the governance process or in leading the development process and therefore they should find a place on the table and they should be able to take a decision which affects their lives. So once we agree on this and I'm sure the Parliament is the place, as Nalin ji was saying, is the place where we can debate and discuss how to go about it. But one thing we should be very clear that we cannot delay introduction of this reservation movement at all any further, whether it is the new Parliament, whether it is two thousand and twenty-three, whether there is an election coming, I think it's time was ripe earlier and I think it is beyond right.
Beyond right. Mar gaye hum khuli rahi aankhein, ye mere intzar ki hati, Sunal ji, kab laoge, ye bill kab laoge, there are so many women MPs who have asked this question.
Oh, and rightly so, and rightly so, I would have been very happy and our leader would have been very happy if it was introduced ten years ago, if the UPA would have given, we would have also supported it, if the government is really good support it, we have been betting for it.
True, let, let me just bring in Sunal Man Singh ji. Namaste ma'am, please go ahead.
Namaste, namaste ya, aapne acha kaha, ke mar gaye hum khuli reh gayi aankhein.
Ye mere intzar ki hati.
Khuli aankhein, the open eyes. Had, had, ab ho gayi khatam, I think before elections in the, during either this short session or during the winter session, we are all absolutely confident that this long awaited bill jo jhul gaya tha, that will be brought in with sufficient, sufficient thinking, sufficient amendments, sufficient provisions. But it is a gone conclusion that twelve percent and thirteen percent in Lok Sabha, Rajasabha, it is really shameful for an India Bharat of two thousand and twenty-three. Bharat ki nari, nari sashakti karana and nari tu narayani, all these slogans, beti bachao, beti padhaao, they will come to fruition and I'm sure that the woman, I don't like the word elite because it's a bad word, to me it's a bad word. But women from all classes and all kinds of backgrounds, they will have a chance. I don't think we should underestimate women as such and I think those kind of, misgivings are now misplaced because that was a different time when the husbands would become the honorary, I mean the, the background person. Now the things have changed, even the what you call rural women, the women have become so savvy, I mean they are, they are selling products from the mobile phone.
Because recently, Sunal ji, and, and we'll take this forward, here is the concern, are we going to really bring it in spirit or is it just an electoral gimmick? And I'm going to start with Sunal Man Singh ji, Nalin Kohli and then Anuman Tayya ji and Amar Patnaik ji because when you talked about more women representation, the increasing concern about sarpanchpatis, it is a reality across states, the sarpanchpati syndrome is that the husband controls everything from the, via proxy, the wife is the sarpanch but it's the husband calling the shots. We don't need such kind of policymaking and we don't need such kind of women netas, we need genuine women netas. And is this a platform? In fact, do all parties, political parties have enough candidates? Will they genuinely allow women candidates to come through?
They will produce candidates.
Jee.
The women will come forward, all political parties will find their candidates, why be so cynical about it? And I think the husband taking the potshots or taking decisions is long foregone, there may be a few examples here and there, I mean in, in a country as large as ours, I mean you cannot say hundred percent but there might be some but by and large as I was saying that even the rural women have become so savvy, so intelligent, they know what is right and they don't allow their husbands to rule over them. So I think we need to flow with the time and I have every faith in our Prime Minister's intentions, honest, good intentions, it's not an election gimmick, it is time, it will come to fruition, it will be realized.
But we are all on the same boat, in the sense we are all in agreement that this bill is way beyond its time, it's more than due. The concern, Nalin Kohli ji, is to perhaps try and exact political capital and electoral gains or perhaps to even drive a wedge within the opposition alliance, the bill should not be brought in haste because you have absolute numbers, the bill should be read and it should read right, it should not be fallacious, it should ensure women empowerment in the true sense and women representation in the true sense. And that's where the concern is.
For almost three decades, for almost three decades, it's been pending. In these three decades, there has been no shortage of views of what shape it should take and what all could be part of it or should not be part of it. It's been discussed in the media, it's been discussed by parliamentarians, it's been discussed by experts on forums, so it's been an ongoing exercise. The counter narrative is that you keep it pending further for further discussion or etcetera or you leave it to the collective wisdom of the parliamentarians who ultimately will vote on behalf of the people of India. So both views can exist, Anand, one is that no, no, let's continue discussing about it before we do anything concrete and the other is no, let's go ahead and the people who are there represent the collective will of people of India in participative democracy as members of Parliament and let it be voted. Sometimes changes happen while voting too. Now that is something that only, as I, it's the common prerogative of what would it like to do? Would it like to come and do it now or would it like to keep it pending if it is even to be bought in this session?
Right.
So therefore, these are the issues that I will not contemplate on because it's not correct.
Legally speaking, legally speaking, let me understand because you're a lawyer also, quickly legally speaking before I bring you, Anuman Tayya ji. One aspect is that the bill should read right. Secondly, if it says thirty-three percent reservation for women across the board, does that not also factor in the reserved seats and the quota seats already? And does that not reserve the reserved seats and quota seats, thirty-three percent within that also for women? So this entire aspect of quota representation, OBC representation, doesn't it get addressed?
See, Anand, end of the day, please bear in mind that a government and that too Prime Minister Modi's government, which is completely service oriented, as he says, seva bhav se kam kar rai and we are working towards empowering people and that's why the beneficiaries are targeted. In that, you don't do injustice with X to do justice to Y. The approach has to be justice for all and that is where, if I can use the word, creative powers of the legislative process can unleash themselves. So I don't think it should be seen as me was X versus Y or Y versus Z, I think it is to find that ground where everyone gets justice and there's no cause of injustice.
No, but women, when you say OBC quota that includes women, why, why should there be a separate reservation for women and separate OBC quota reservation? So are you then saying that the OBC quota is only for men? It, it somehow doesn't make a rational sense.
I never said that.
Nah, I'm just saying.
I never said that, but you see, again, I never said that, I said, I talked to the principle that doing justice for X does not mean injustice for Y. Simply put, these are the different models but it has to be seen empirically, how do you approach it? Today, reservation is a reality.
Correct, but the reservation sir is for a caste grouping, the caste grouping includes both men and women, doesn't it?
Which is gender, so now you are saying what happens when you bring gender based reservation, then the next argument you'll have to take is the horizontal versus vertical, horizontal versus vertical reservation. So I mean, this is a more complex exercise and that's why I went to the principle, it can't be about doing justice to anyone.
Because if it, genders across all caste creed communities, Anuman Tayya ji, so if it is a thirty-three percent reservation across the board, so caste reservation is also for women, no, because women also part of that entire OBC caste or is it only men folk who consider themselves OBC and women folk are supposed to be considered separate? Then this othering is being done by, in a, in a very, you know, unconstitutional manner? Thirty-three percent reservation across the board includes everybody then? Phir isme caste quota wala problem kasa hai? Anuman Tayya ji.
See, sir, I wanted to tell you, Anand ji.
Yeah.
Why the caste quota is demanded, that's the basic question. The caste quota demanded that the social justice or gender justice which has to be given must be spread out to every communities, to all the communities.
Correct.
See grouping of communities in the backward classes, why it has been done? It has been done because the backwardness of those communities has to be justified and grouping has been done.
Correct.
Accordingly, in the reservation, the gender justice should be given across the communities, across the rural, urban communities and also, this is demanded by certain communities, certain political parties.
But Anuman Tayya ji, that's exactly what I'm trying to tell you.
I don't sincerely say it is not correct.
No, no, Anuman Tayya ji, what I'm asking you is, backward classes, backward classes include men and women, OBCs include men and women.
No, backward class.
So OBC quota is for both men and women.
Exactly, exactly.
Correct, so now if there are reserved seats for OBC, reserved seats for SC and ST, so then if I say thirty-three percent reservation that will be across the board irrespective of whether it is general quota, SC quota, ST quota, OBC quota, thirty-three percent reservation for women, so in those OBC seats or reserve seats, thirty-three percent quota will be for women, OBC women, SC women, ST women.
No, give me one second.
Where's the problem?
Give me one second, give me one second, no, give me one second. See, the reservation, forget about the reservation, the general seats are available for both and, both men and women, isn't it? If that is available for both men and women, why only men are represented in all the constituencies, not the women?
Are you, what I'm saying is, the moment you bring in thirty-three percent reservation in general quota, bring the same across SC, ST, OBC quotas, reserve quota, all the reserve quota thirty-three percent, so women have to be represented across the board, across all caste creed, community region.
Yes.
Correct, so where is the need for a quota within a quota, there's no need.
The demand is that.
I am simply saying, you just say thirty-three percent representation of women across the board, Sunal Man Singh ji, ye simple solution hai kene, isme kya atna bakhedha?
No, one minute, one minute, Anand ji.
Bakhedha is a very good word.
If you don't bring this, if you don't, if you don't bring this quota within the quota, the women who are going to represent this Parliament will be from a particular class.
Sir, I am saying, sir, it is a very simple point, all you need to say is thirty-three percent reservation for women across all seats and this includes whatever seats are the designation, be it reserve category, backward category, SC category, urban category, rural category, whatever it is, based on whatever the classification is, you have to mark thirty-three percent for women. So women, OBC women will fight on OBC seats, SC, ST women will fight on SC, ST seats, you just don't, there is no quota, you don't need to create a separate quota for OBC women, no.
No, no, unless you create the quota for OBC, unless you create the quota for SC women, they will not be represented.
Sir.
So that is the demand from these communities that they should get the representation.
It should just read simply, sir, whatever seats be designated, however they are, even post-delimitation, thirty-three percent of the seats across categories, general, reserved, unreserved and SC, ST, thirty-three percent need to be reserved for, will be for women, eligibility women based on that caste community creed.
Yes.
Simp, are you in agreement with this, Sunal ji or not? Key cabinet meeting has just concluded, we'll try and, we just, we're putting it out on air, Sunal ji, please speak and moment we have file with us, we'll get, get the details, yeah.
Because this quota within quota within quota becomes like Abhimanyu's Chakra View and this is, as, as you put it, it's a very simple thing, according to me, I agree with you. Now Vidvan's and the other MPs may have other ideas because how many quotas are we going to, I mean quotas have said, apply to both. I mean quotas have said, apply to both men and women. So there, there is a catch because the men may not want to cede their seats to women, their own women. That, that is the catch.
To yet, ye, ye toh nahi hona chhiye. It is, then the men folk have to very clearly understand that backward classes include men and women and in most backward classes today, women outnumber men. So.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
You can either simplify the language and say, uniform, across a place, across the board, thirty-three percent reservation for women across all classifications of seats so far that are being mandated. Is it so difficult to word this, Nalin ji? And are you in principle, is the BJP in principle in agreement with this?
I can't give you an answer to that honestly. Because I don't know, I don't know what is going to be the format of it. As I said right at the beginning, it will come through the parliamentary process.
I'm just understanding, trying to understand, if you worded legally, sir, yeah, from a legal perspective, not just as a party spokesperson.
Yes, of course, that's what I'm saying. Look, Anand, I'm speaking just out of experience.
Jee.
Everything is possible, it depends on how you start. So therefore, the starting point of any bill, you're talking of say, women's reservation, I could take it to any bill that is proposed to be an act. Its current form and its design, as in the legislative design, will determine what changes it needs. And that's why I said, it's a creative legislative process. So we have no choice but to wait. If the bill is being introduced, then we have to see how is the bill introduced? Because these questions that you are asking are the logical questions that will be asked.
Nalin ji, I have to interrupt you.
And you're absolutely right.
Beg your pardon, I have to interrupt you going across to pile meta. Prime Minister Narendra Modi has just left after the cabinet meeting. He's just left Parliament after the cabinet meeting, we're given to understand. A crucial cabinet meeting was chaired, pile meta joins us with more details, yes, pile.
Anand, I wish I could tell you what really transpired in that meeting, but that meeting which got underway about six thirteen the afternoon evening, just got over about five minutes ago, so the Prime Minister just left from the Parliament.
Wow.
And the day will not come to an end, you know, Anand, because some ministers have come back to the Parliament House. So we'll have to still wait and see if we can get any snippet of what's really happening. It's very, very difficult to get any information from this government in terms of how it plans itself. But, you know, we are trying, but there is a lot of speculation that is doing the buzz about bringing an important bill. Now that the Prime Minister said in the morning that this is a small but a very, very crucial session.
But you are saying that this meeting lasted close to about an hour and forty-five minutes, pile. So something seriously has been discussed.
Oh, well, of course, you know, it's very rare, Anand, that you know, you also know how the government functions. It's very rare for you to see actually visuals of the cabinet being sent as well. I remember the last time that they sent us a visual of the cabinet meeting was when they had resumed the cabinet after a bout of Covid. So basically, you know, physical meetings of the cabinet happened after a long time. That is when they had sent us in. So I can see a lot of ministers who are currently inside the Parliament House. I can also see Piyush Goyal who just entered the Parliament House back again. This Prellaj Joshi is the Parliamentary Affairs Minister, he's back in the house. It would be wrong to speculate that they probably are looking at, you know, preparing for a bill. But there is a big day tomorrow in Parliament, moving from the old Parliament to the new Parliament building. And there are concern ministers who will have to look into account of what other preparations are really like. And if I'm not mistaken, I just saw Dr. Jaishankar also going into Parliament again. Let's just try and figure out what's really happening. Hopefully, we'll have some answers for our viewers because it's only speculation that we've been doing all the last, I don't know how many days and how many hours.
I, I don't know why I have a lot of our viewers sending me a lot, a lot of information and questions and they're quite intrigued about how things are going on. Sonal Man Singh ji, what do you know, ma'am? What is, what can be expected? Ek ghanta pentaalis minute ki meeting and now all the ministers going back, cabinet ministers going back into Parliament after the PM has left?
Something is brewing, something very interesting and important, of course. And iski, is, is sarkar ki khasiyat to ye, khubi ye hai, that bandhi muti.
Lakki?
No, nothing, I mean even, lak, sabalak, dirdelak, whatever, dars lakki. Today also, you know, in the corridors of Rajasabha and everywhere and in Central Hall, everyone was speculating. Arre bhai kya hai, aaj kya, acha kal se kya hoga, kya, kisi ko pata hai, kisi ko pata hai, kisi ko, all they're going on. Nobody has any inkling at all. And this is the special feature, one of the special features of the Modi government.
Well, that, many, the opposition would say that this is the, this is as opaque as it can become, that even the parliamentarians and the own government does not know what, what is being thought inside the PMO or what is being planned. But Anumantaya ji, the opposition sometimes gets wind of things even before anybody else does. Like you got, the opposition was the first to highlight what happened with the Bharat issue, with the President of Bharat invite, Prime Minister of Bharat and that the opposition brought it to light. So let me ask you, what have you gleaned? Kuch to huwa hai, kuch to ho raha hai, what's happening?
No, there is, there is a speculation that Women's Reservation Bill may come to the Parliament by tomorrow. There is all the preparation going on. All the political parties, including BJP, is talking about that. So that itself signals everybody that this Women Reservation Bill may come to the Parliament with changes or without changes.
With changes or without changes?
Let us see tomorrow.
Well, well, news eighteen has information that it will not come tomorrow, it will come day after tomorrow. Tomorrow will be only moving from the old Parliament after a lot of photo ops and sharing of memories and then walking into the new Parliament.
Of course, of course.
And some conversations.
If that comes, there is this, this special session which is going on now for five days has some significance according to me. So they may come. Tomorrow, of course, it is only shifting, they cannot bring in tomorrow because we have to settle down in the new Parliament House, Rajasabha, Lok Sabha, maybe day after tomorrow. I think this will come day after tomorrow.
Yeah, one, one, one thing, one thing MPs will be guaranteed in the new Parliament is a sense of space because it is so much bigger, so much more. But please realize that that is on only till twenty twenty-six because once delimitation happens, twenty twenty-nine, you'll have lot of company because the size of Parliament itself will balloon.
Yeah.
But to the lady and the gentleman, thank you very much. We, we wait and see what happens and try and looking for some inside info on what happened in that cabinet meet. Nalin Kohli ji will stay on, it's a straight face off on what happened. Some aajib aajib between Piyush Goyal ji and Malikartun Kharghey on the floor of the house around G twenty.